Cool. All right. It looks like it's six o'clock by my watch. So let's call the city council work session for October eighteenth to order. There is an agenda in Spanish on the website. A roll call, please. City recorder Ryan.
Uh, councillor McBride?
Here.
And mayor just said that councillor Cofield will be late. Um councillor Noel Holloman?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, no Jules yet.
I'm here, sorry. It might be breaking up a little bit.
Uh, Mayor Rogers?
Present.
Uh councillor Bacon?
Here.
Councillor Finley?
Here.
Okay. Mister Mayor, we're ready to go.
Thank you. All right. Council agenda and meeting, anything this for this evening, folks? Uh, seeing none. What about the business items for this after this evening? All right. I'm also seeing none. So uh, let's move on to item five presentations. Uh, looks like I've got the chamber and Berg bucks. I'm not sure who wants to go first, or is this a tag team on this? So. It's a Scott and and Polly are here. So.
Yeah, I think what we what we had discussed was actually trying to have uh, maybe Scott introduce himself and uh, and start with that. And then kind of roll into a tag team of Berg bucks. So um, wanna kinda introduce Scott to introduce himself a little bit. Uh, we have a little bit of shared history there. Uh, and then in that we both uh, came to Newburgh from Steamboat Springs, Colorado. Um, and actually, as small a town as that is, we're not necessarily acquainted, but uh, you know, know of his work. And uh, he did some great work with uh, local theater in Steamboat Springs and uh, some involvement with a lot of the chamber type activities. And so really excited to have him have had a couple of meetings with him uh, in various uh, settings. And so excited to have his energy uh, at the chamber. So hand it off to you, Scott.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. Hi, everybody. Nice to meet you all. Um. Yeah, originally um, from Buffalo, New York. You can all hear me, right? Okay, cool. Um, originally from Buffalo, New York, headed out to Colorado, kinda right after I graduated from college. Um, had an education degree and you know, kinda thought I'd I'd be a teacher at some point, which I was. Um, shortly after I got my first taste of the Pacific Northwest, uh, retraced the Lewis and Clark Trail. Sort of when the um, internet was becoming a thing schools were using back in like nineteen ninety-eight. When we were all getting those AOL discs and everyone was like, what is this internet thing? So some friends of mine and I um, created this educational program where we uh, went out and could be like live in the field and communicate with school kids anywhere in the country. And so we made this really neat educational program and and I just remember hitting the Pacific Northwest on my mountain bike and going, holy cow, mental note, this is a this is a special place. So um, you know, after the Lewis and Clark Trail, went back to Colorado, which I was there on and off for about twenty-five years. Um, and um, you know, got in the nonprofit world. There's a historic theater in downtown Steamboat called the Chief Theater. Just similar in size and decorum as the cameo theater here in Newburgh. And um, a group of citizens were concerned that it was gonna go away, cuz the Carmike cinemas didn't renew the lease with the theater. Anyway, before I ramble too much, um, I was tasked with becoming their first executive director. And uh, I programmed the heck out of it. And everything from live music to films to fundraisers for nonprofits. And um, it led me to starting a magic festival. We did a festival called Steamboat is Magic. And uh, just over the years, we had a lot of the same groups come and use our space year after year. We'd show the uh, annual Warren Miller ski film, and it was a big fundraiser for our local winter sports club. And so I'm all about collaborating and just, you know, working together is the way it should be, and it's just the way I ran that business. And in in two thousand and sixteen, we won the business of the year. It's a called the Navigator Awards, and it's a award uh, jointly by the local paper and the local chamber. And so uh, it was, we were the first nonprofit to win it, and it was just a great honor, because I didn't really feel like I was doing anything other than just being who I was, which was just someone that really loved his job, someone that loved being part of the community. And and um, so COVID hit, but but the right before COVID hit. Uh, in two thousand and nineteen, we had over two hundred events at that theater, which I just think is mind blowing. Thirty different nonprofits and um, just heck of a good time. Uh, one of the last events before we shut down, I actually got to perform a half hour set on stage with Second City Improv, um, which I thought was a really, really fun thing. Um, cuz I also teach a lot of theater classes to kids and adults. And improv is just my favorite thing. But anyway, uh, COVID shut us down. The owners of the theater didn't wanna renew our lease, and so I just said, universe, take me somewhere else. And and it took me to Newburgh, and I've been here for about a month. I am loving the town. My family's loving the town. I've got three kids. And um, we're just having a great time. I'm enjoying getting to meet everybody and and just I'm I'm easing myself into things. I'm a giant sponge right now, and so I I look forward to. I know I've talked to already quite a few of you on this meeting. Um, I look forward to meeting you and collaborating with you. And and a couple of the groups that I've already had a few meetings with are the Downtown Coalition and and Taste Newburgh. Um, and I look forward to uh, being a significant part of the Berg bucks. So I I could talk forever, and I won't. Um, if you have any questions for me, I'd I'd love to hear them. If not, we can kinda roll right into to Polly's presentation about Berg bucks, if if that's what you guys want.
Let me do a little bit of housekeeping here quickly. So uh, Ms. Stonebrink and Tony Aiello, I I think you're probably here for the the business session. Uh, you're welcome to stay, welcome to listen, but the the business session starts at seven. Um, and then your item, which I believe um, is the annexation, that'll be item eight A um, on the um, seven o'clock agenda. So like I say, you're welcome to stay, but I didn't wanna keep you if you uh, didn't understand what was when the next cycle would be. So so thank you. All right. With that, any questions for Scott, folks? All right, Polly, take it away.
Okay, I'm gonna I'm gonna share with you my presentation, um, but I have a question. When I share my screen, can you also see everybody talking? Or does that, does it, is it take over when I share my screen?
We should be able to see both on the side, I think, but we may not be able to see everyone at once, but let's give it a try.
Okay, let's give it a try.
All right.
Okay, I gotta move this over just a second. How is that working?
Yeah, that's good. Can you see us on the side of your?
I can, I can. Can everybody see each other? Perfect, okay.
Awesome.
So, thank you for allowing me to be able to present, and I will want Scott and Dan to be able to um, share as well, because they are a significant part of this this endeavor. So um, this is the card that um, you have helped sponsor. Actually, it's really and we'll talk a little bit more about that when we um, get going. So um, this is a picture from Taste Newburgh. Um, I don't, somebody probably can recognize the vineyard. I can't recognize the vineyard. Um, and then the the symbol in the middle, the bird, that was a design by Sherry Hampton, who is a long-term Newburgh resident, and she worked with um, a professor at Georgia. She was a secretary or an assistant out there, and she worked with a professor to develop this this logo, the sticker, and you might see them around on cars. So it um, from two thousand and fifteen, and I asked her if we could use her logo for the Berg bucks, and she said, she kindly said yes. So I I love the fact that it has, this already has a history. It already has kind of an established logo that we are, we are using. Um, the next one, um, is part of the program. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go through and give you kind of an overview, and you can ask questions if you want to, cuz it's kind of um, complex, and I'm gonna give you the backstory of where we, why we are launching that at the end of this month. Uh, it's part of the downtown gift cards um, um, company. Um, it says, and these are the questions I might ask, is what is the local currency gift card? What are the benefits for Newburgh? How does it work? Who can get involved? Basically, who can be the people who accept these cards? How are they sold? And how can you help more to su- support the Newburgh Downtown Gift Card? So I was approached by some news, um, some business owners, um, Paul Bouchon and Philip Higgins, who um, wanted to do something like they had in McMinnville, which is called Macbucks. And um, Mac McMinnville, as you know, probably um, is ahead of us when it comes to kind of this type of uh, promotions in downtowns. And um, so they had had a a paper gift card for many years, and then they switched um, in two thousand and nineteen to a card called Macbucks, which you'll see there as an image there. And basically, um, a- and then the first year that they did that, they sold about thirty thousand dollars worth of cards. That, oh, no, thirty thousand dollars worth of those cards were spent in McMinnville. COVID hit in two thousand and twenty, and it increased to about ninety thousand dollars. So what was happening was there was um, companies with um, a lot of employees were purchasing them as gifts um, as a way to support the downtown, and they, the reason they know how much everything um, uh, how much money was spent in town i- in their town is because what comes with this card is also some really good analytics. So let me explain to you. So after I talked to him, he said it's expensive, which it is. It costs about ten thousand dollars to kinda get it off the ground. Because what it is, is it creates a closed-loop system. So I showed this other picture, but like Olive Garden and all those com- uh, those other restaurants. And if you would buy a card like this at at the Fred Meyer checkout or the Naps checkout, you would notice that you could only spend it at those restaurants. And so that's what's called a closed-loop system. And um, there are only basically two of those companies in town who do that. I mean, sorry, in the world who do that. And one is um, an online version, which like downtown um, bank is used. And the other is what's called a uh, is a a physical card, which other places use, such as downtown Rapid City. Um, uh, Sioux Falls, and then this was in Lawrence. And so what I did is I was like, okay, how do these works? I I emailed all these um, different uh, uh, directors. They were either chamber directors or a downtown association coalition type of directors. And they talked about how it works really, really well. And one of the things is it has that analytic capability. So you can track and see exactly how much money is being spent and where it's being spent. Any questions at this point? That's pretty complex type of, I use some jargon like closed loop. So does anybody have any questions at this point? Okay, I'll move on. You can interrupt me at any time. Okay, so here are the benefits. It's um, the um, cuz for some reason, just let me get this out my way. There we go. So the benefits of the card include that it, they can only be spent in Newburgh. It drives traffic into Newburgh and into the businesses. It stimulates the economic activity. So here's the thing that's really interesting, is consumers spend on an average sixty-five percent more than the amount on the card. So that's called overspend, and they track how much that is. And so you can see that when a stu- when a person gets a twenty-five dollar gift card to uh, a downtown Berg bucks, and they go in and spend it at a restaurant, for example, um, it not only tells you how that they spent the twenty-five dollars there, but how much more they spent there. They go and spend it at Chapters or Pulp and Circumstance or Little Bird. And so that's one thing that's really helpful for you as the, as the city who is running this, is like how, it's often a question of how does my investment? What's the return on my investment? And this gives you the actual matrix for that. Any questions about that? Okay. Um, how does it work? So it's really easy. Um, basically, the person um, the the business who is going to be a part of this, um, just runs a dollar through on their system. And then basically, as long as they have a point-of-sale system that can take, like of any Visa card, um, they can take this one. And um, it 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 goes into their account just like um, a Visa transaction would. Um, the P, we have, we, this was a harder kind of conversations, like who's gonna be the people who get to be a part of it? And um, because it came up through the Newburgh Downtown Coalition, um, and we're gonna put the energy and people power behind it. Um, it's gonna be connected to our membership. But one of the unique things about the Newburgh Downtown Coalition, unlike, well, like the Chamber of Commerce, which is Shaheilum Valley, it's geographic. Um, but ours is very small, and it's just the small kind of urban renewal core is what the Newburgh Downtown Coalition. Um, but we have decided that you can, that anybody who's a business in Newburgh, who's a local business, locally owned and operated with a Newburgh zip code can opt into this program and opt into an affiliate membership. Um, and then they just have to run it just like a Visa, and it's pretty easy to do. Any questions about membership or who's eligible?
That you will, yes, I love this, but I'm assuming that you will then kind of make announcements to businesses, and they can do that affiliate membership if they're interested then.
Correct. So what I have done is I've already done the first initial um, ask uh, uh, offer to the people who are already members of the Downtown Coalition, exactly. And then the next step is to roll it out with the press release to the rest of the members as well. And the rest of, rest of Newburgh, and then invite them to come and be part of the membership and be part of this program.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so far, the response has been really good. So for example, um, one of the questions was, well, how? Cuz it's it's different than a traditional um, gift card, the way that you would do like at Chapters, when we owned Chapters. You would get the money all upfront, even if the person never spent the gift card, the money was already in our till. Well, this is the opposite type of thing, right? It's they, the the businesses don't get the money until the card is spent at their business. And so kind of making that shift of understanding, I just have to explain it to them, then I go, okay, I get it. And then they go, well, who's paying for these? All this, it sounds like a lot of work to manage this. And I say, the city of Newburgh is paying uh, with a generous grant, and it's, they're very appreciative. So that's really helpful. Okay. So they're sold in two different ways, and this is the other problem. So the problem was, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. So somebody else has a question.
Yeah. Is is this like, like a Visa card, and it gets loaded for X amount of dollars, and you can just take it to any business that is part of the program? So you could
Correct.
empty the whole card out at a restaurant, for example, or you could go to several different places. Is that how it works?
Correct. The the money stays on the, the card never expires, and the, and the money stays on there, and they can spend it at different places. And Mike, to your point, um, when I talked to McMinnville, they said that most of the money is spent at restaurants. But um, it could be spent anywhere.
So so how do you? How how do you, uh, I mean, if you, if it never runs out, you just, what if you wanna put more money on it? You just put more money on it. You get a hold of whoever is dealing with it, you put more money on it.
You, it's not reloadable, so it doesn't have that capability, but in the, but the money that they've added to it doesn't expire. And even if we opt out of this program after a year or two, um, they can still use the card at any of the businesses that were already established. I mean, I'm sure that businesses go out of business, though, so. But um, yeah, so it's not reloadable, but theoretically, so but the theory of it's the same thing, like you said, a Visa gift card is exactly like that. Any other questions? Okay. Um, okay. So one of the problems that we had to overcome is I only work uh, part-time. Um, and I don't spend a ton of time at the downtown Coalition office, even though I really like that space. Um, but we do have a visitor center where we have it stacked week um, throughout the week. So um, when we approach, I approached Josh first, and then um, I I talked, then we, we had to kind of wait until we saw who the next person was going to be at the chamber, and then uh, reaching out to Scott. Scott was very um, collaborative and helpful. And he said, sure, let's go ahead and sell it at the Chamber office. So there'll be a physical location. There's also an online location that people can buy the card through either one of those. Scott, do you wanna add anything to this, or it's pretty simple?
Y- yeah, it just made perfect sense. We're, we're here, we're staff, you know, we're a easy place for people to come stop in. And then it just generating more traffic to the visitor's center, which we always want, you know, then we're talking to people about where they're gonna go visit a winery, or you know, just it just makes sense to have more traffic in here. So it was something I didn't really even have to think about. It was an instant yes.
Yeah, it's excellent, and I really appreciate it, cuz it is, makes it helpful, cuz some people really want that to the physical place to buy the card, not just an online um, an online option. Okay. So how can um, you support it? Well, obviously, you already did. By funding, you made it possible. Um, there's no way that our, we could have probably done a campaign. Um, and it's not, we realize that funds are for this are not forever, and so we probably will have to do a campaign. Um, but our hope is, is that this will show such value to our um, merchants downtown, that they will support it through memberships. And then also, uh, we can get other donors who who see it as a value, a direct way of keeping our community very livable and um, an exciting place to grow. Um, also, you can talk about it, um, send them my way, send them Scott's way, or to Dan. We all understand it. Taste Newburgh is also going to do some promotional work with this. Um, I'm already having Leslie help me with PR, uh, the wording for the PR release and things like that. So and then you can also just buy it yourself. So um, that's, that's basically, one of the things I have included on here are the, like the specifics around the agreements that that we sign that you get, including the the financial piece to that. Um, we've signed up for what you have to basically, a monthly success package. Um, and it's four hundred dollars a month, plus a dollar for each of the participating businesses. One of the things I did was, I was thinking, oh, this is very expensive. I don't have the money. Is there any way we can cobble together something like this on our own? And I even called MetaBank, which is the, the person who runs the, this program for uh, EML. And she explained to me, the reason why it's so expensive is it is very, it is, um, you have to handle a lot of data. Um, and it's, it's a workforce that has to go through this. So it's pretty tedious, and that's what the hours that we're paying for, for this. Um, and then we also are doing the online marketplace, which is really helpful for, for that. And we're doing the standard fill it, fulfilling it ourself as well. So we're trying, we're giving that our buyers two opportunities.
Polly, it looks like Jules has a question.
Oh, good, Jules. Hi.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I really like the idea of the, like, having a physical place where folks can buy the cards. Um, I am curious, though, if the chamber has Spanish-speaking staff. Um, I know that the community, Spanish-speaking community, really like to buy things directly in person. But I wanna make sure that if I send someone, that there will be someone on staff who can help them out.
Uh, currently, I am the only person here, and I do not speak Spanish. Um, we are bringing on a part-time person, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. And I won't know the answer to that um, until we hire them. So um, unfortunately, no, right now.
You know, that, that's a really good question. I have a couple of, a couple of thoughts about that. But anybody else on the um, city council have any other thoughts about that, or the Spanish-speaking um, uh, issue?
You know, it'd be nice, at the very least, if we didn't even have a Spanish speaker that we had material in Spanish about the program. That would be great. Even, you know, as, as Elise said, too, for our Spanish-speaking businesses, whether they could sell it or alternatively, you know, make sure somebody has that material.
Yeah. Actually, that isn't definitely an option. Uh, it could, does not have to be sold at just one place. It could be sold at another physical location. Um, and that's a a definitely an option for that. Uh, one of our um, board members on the NDC, Ricky Miguel, we were just talking about that today in our board meeting. Cuz one of the discussions we had was, how do we make sure that we uh, are representative in our businesses, correct? That I'm just using my standard way of reaching out, which is through my channels, through email. But um, that is, it's concerning to us that that probably will not reach the um, Latinx members of our community. And so Ricky wants to be on a committee that, or kind of an ad hoc committee, that looks at making sure that we we represent them as part of this um, Berg bucks. Um, and talking with Dan about city resources, I think that you have a special city, like, I'm not gonna, gonna get the right wording for that, but a a position that has been filled that might be a good resource for us. Dan, do you have something that's thought about that?
Um, we've got a community engagement specialist who's bilingual, but I think we've also just brought on a translation service. And so that might be a better uh, service to to use, would be just kind of plugging people in to um, to a line they could dial in. And and certainly, we can translate materials and have those things available as well.
Yeah. I really like the idea of a one, of a person in, a person who is in person, um, who can speak Spanish. Uh, I think that that would be really important. So I want, and I did not think of that. Um, so I do want to pursue that, and I really appreciate you, Jules, for bringing that up. Okay, any other questions? This is the end of my presentation. Is there anything else that people want to um, uh, uh, see again or have clarified more?
Looks like Mike has a question.
Okay, Mike.
So, so let's say you put a hundred dollars, you can't reload it, or you put a couple hundred dollars or whatever. So when you've used it all up, do you just go back and you just buy another one there, right?
Correct, correct.
And um, okay, so you just buy another one, um, and the, the four hundred and some dollars that was on there?
Yeah.
Who's paying that? Is the businesses paying that, or who's paying that?
No, that's part of what, boy, I heard somebody else answer. That's what, that's what, um, from the grant from your, from the city of Newburgh is paying for that.
Okay.
In essence, what we paid for in the, it with the startup funds is essentially that startup. And so year one, trying to get the, the proof of concept, get it launched, and you know, trying to make sure that we've got some options to evaluate. And certainly, I think the benefit of the analytics is to where people are spending some of the money that they have in town. Um, you know, this is akin to some of the successful programs that we've seen in other cities through the pandemic of how folks have tracked, uh, what I guess I would call resilience in the business community. Uh, just by sort of evaluating the, the businesses that are being uh, visited. And and the, obviously, there's a, another benefit for the chamber and and NDC in sense of uh, driving traffic to the visitor's center. I think it helps to augment the activities there and and hopefully expand the knowledge that folks have, if they are coming from out of town. And to, you know, realize that there's this opportunity to have a gift card, or maybe somebody gifted them a gift card on their trip, that kind of thing. But um, the benefit as well of the closed loop, that, you know, it keeps the money in town. Um, you know, those are the reasons that we sort of jumped in when, when we did to kind of see if this would work.
Uh, Polly, when is, when it, when can we buy cards?
Yes. So I'm working on the wording of the PR right now. This company is out of Scotland. And so some of the phrasing, the idioms that they were using didn't quite work, and so we are working on the PR phrasing. Um, and they have to get that approved from the bank, I'm hoping by the end of October.
Well, if you need help translating the Scottish, we, either Will Worthy or Alison Siler can help you out with the Scottish, so.
That sounds great. I'll do that.
We'll offer them up, so.
Yes.
All right, cool. Any other questions, folks? Now it looks good. All right, that's exciting. Yeah, that's cool. Scott, Polly, that's. Scott, Paulie, that's that's exciting.
Yes, I'm very excited. I I really appreciate it and. I I'm looking forward to this collaboration. I know that Leslie is planning on sending it to the card or using the card as a gift for any of the writers that come through. And then they can also use that as a promotional piece. So I I see it as being something like you were talking about. Dan, that could be used for tourism as well. So I think it's a it's a great endeavor and I really appreciate. The Sea of Newburgh, funding it and getting behind it.
All right. Well, thank you. And we'll we'll wait to hear more, including, you know, when that PR piece comes out and when we can. Hey, this is in time for Christmas. We can all start stocking up on Bird Buck cards for Christmas. So there we go. Cool. All right. Anything else on that? All right, we got a little time. In fact, we got quite a bit of time. So should we move to? City manager and city attorneys reports would be great if you're. If you guys are game, Dan or James or both.
Yeah, I can kind of jump in and I don't think I've got a half hour's worth of material, so there should be plenty of time for James. You know, definitely appreciate the the partnership on the Bird Box. It's been a fun thing to to work on and and definitely was one of those things where I think we came at it. Simultaneously from different directions and it was just neat to kind of see the. Paulie just ran with it and it was ready to go and had had well researched kind of the platform and everything. So exciting. So I'm going to start with the the COVID news as I I sort of tend to, you know, I think if you've been. Paying attention to some of the the news for employers, which I'm sure everyone does. From the federal government, we are expecting to need to enact a vaccine mandate for the city. For city staff. It's something that my understanding employers of a hundred employees or more will need to do and we we fall in that category. Certainly, we'll probably need to bargain with our collective bargaining units and we'll we'll do what we have to do on that, but. It's really just waiting still, sort of in a semi holding pattern. I think we're both behind and and early on this, if that's at all possible. In the sense that I I think some of the neighboring jurisdictions have already started to. Get, you know, feedback from staff in terms of some of the bargaining and also some of the objections and exceptions that folks are having. Where we haven't yet done that, but we are also all waiting for OSHA at the federal level to. Opine with the actual rules to what they're going to require. So we're sort of, like I said, we're behind and ahead. So maybe we're in a perfect spot for for that. But more to come on that, certainly want to be cautious about. What is required and what is on the line, since obviously I think if you paid attention, you've seen that. Folks are are losing jobs or quitting jobs as a result of this and we're seeing enough of that already. We're sort of. I'm concerned about creating more turnover in the city organization and so. Just trying to to balance the public health and and safety with the reality of of job, the potential, I guess, of of job loss. So more to come. Related to that, I think Alison Seiler informed me that it's it's now called the Talent Tsunami. And so my talent tsunami update is that we're down a lot of positions. We're seeing sort of a constant flow and may so maybe it's not a tsunami so much as just the waves lapping at the shore. But in essence, just at this moment, I think we're recruiting ten positions actively. We've got about thirty some odd that have been either recruited and or are in process or planned. And so it's a little bit overwhelming, honestly, just trying to keep up with the work, but also. Restocking obviously takes some time to train, to, you know, get people working effectively and independently. And so we're in that mode of of trying to fill seats, trying to retain, trying to train, trying to. Keep things moving. And so as of right now, for instance, I'm the acting administrative services director, H R and I T manager. So trying to help out where I can and just, you know, if nothing else, just provide some direct line to those staff units, but. Definitely a lot to juggle for everybody. What else? So we are maybe good news. We were informed this afternoon that with the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. That we may receive additional money because some folks, some jurisdictions have not actually. Going through the process to claim the funds that were allocated to them. And so we're not exactly sure how much that is, but probably in the tens of thousands, we're hoping. Which in the in the not five point three million being not that much money, I think it's maybe pennies in that that scheme, but it's it's more money. So hopefully, that's a benefit that we can take advantage of. And we were informed, I think, to mayor, we were informed that we stand to get about a half a million in additional funds as well. For some of the utilities process projects that we have going on, so. Continue to to look for other sources in the ARPA legislation to to pull in more money. So more hopefully, literally to come. We'll see how that goes. Related to the utilities, you know, big thanks to councillor Yarnell Hallman for attending our Friday tour. Commissioner Kula organized a tour of water infrastructure. We were the first jurisdiction that they came to, so it must have been first is the best. And they were just, it wasn't that they were working their way down geographically, but. In any event, we were the first to 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 show off, I guess, and and get a chance to to tour facilities. So we had state rep. Sharp, State Senator Noble and Fritz from Senator Wyden's office attend and. You know, is is probably a wise thing to do, had had Russ available and and kind of stand back and let Russ tell everybody. The structure. I think the combination of of, you know, all of us being there and and being able to provide some color commentary about what we're. What we do and and how we do it, but also what we're hoping to accomplish in the near future. I think hopefully it was really impactful and lots of notes being taken, so. You know, full that again, kind of the ARPA related or or even just, you know, infrastructure, federal resource available. That they'll see us and and see us as a needed, you know, a place that needs some of those resources specifically for the water side.
So I will just say really fast to interrupt Dan. Dan and Russ were so super, super prepared and I was really, really. Impressed and honored to be a part of it. It was really well done.
Thanks. I definitely think I will take my hat off to Ross on that one. I appreciate that. You know, we're actually as a group, the department heads and a few of the assistant, the department directors are going to attend. Friday's poverty simulation at George Fox University. We are, I think it's about a three hour engagement and we are going to be volunteers. I'm hoping it will be. Really instructive for folks who have not done it. I've done it a couple of times and and really found it really impactful every time that I've I've done it and. Just thinking about ways to to, you know, really have staff see what it's like to be a low income resident and and really kind of the barriers. But also just what it's like to to subsist at low income levels. So hopefully that that can help with some of the programmatic things that we do. Real quickly, I think, yeah, looking at kind of the COVID closures, we are back open in the library as of the fifth. Of October and we're we're planning to reopen court to be live November first. So we're sort of coming back from where we had been and hopefully knock wood that that's continued track, that we're not backtracking again. At some point soon, but. It has been that that roller coaster pattern, so I'm hoping we're we're starting to even out. And then just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, the H R realm again. You know, really looking at right now, trying to to get back to some of the programmatic work in in H R while we're doing recruitment. So it's. It's not all recruitment all the time. We've gotten about a third of our staff through the NeoGov platform for performance evaluations. And it's a constant reminder for me of how behind I am on doing them and and moving things through that process, but. It's really, it's a nice system for automation of some of those records, you know. Like we've talked before, when we're talking about equity and and those kinds of things, how a lot of our records are paper based and it's really challenging to gather data off of them. So this is one of those things where you can link learning objectives into performance evaluations. You can, you know, just have. A place, a central place to kind of collect some of those things and it it really hopefully will, as we get better at this, reduce the burden on H R. And on department managers and and just every employee, I hope, just by using this platform. So. First run through, it's a little rough, but hopefully it'll it'll just get better from here and and make it easier to do the work. The other thing related to H R is we are looking at quotes from vendors who could do classification and compensation studies. That's something that we had talked about doing in our last collective bargaining round and something that's overdue, I think, in terms of just checking where we. We stand with the compensation in particular, in particular. But I think there's a few folks that probably are waiting for classification. Changes as well or evaluations. So those are always time consuming and take a lot of effort. So once we have a vendor on on board, I think we'll probably have a better sense as to when it'll be and how long it'll take, but. Just making sure that folks know we are actively working on that, just while we deal with a lot of other things in H R. So, you know, it's important to get it done. So again, just try to to stay on track. And honestly, with that, I mean, I think there's a whole lot of other things I could go through, but in the essence of time, I'll I'll hand it over if there are. Any questions or just hand it off to James.
Questions, anyone? Alrighty, Dan, thank you. James, you're on if you're ready.
Great, sounds good. Thank you, Mayor Rogers, and I'm going to. Share my screen. I just have a few slides. That I. Wanted to share. All right, so can everyone see the? My is my screen appropriately shared? Great, thank you. This is the quarter three city attorney update, as we've discussed before, quarterly. Like to give a bit of a snapshot on items that that we are working on for the city. This is a brief summary and just intended to provide a flavor of some of the the matters that. We're working on for the city of Newburgh. So of course, if if members of the council have have other questions or inquiries, I'm happy to. Happy to follow up on those. As we go. So just a bit of a snapshot, twenty nine new matters. Came into our office on during quarter three, twenty three current active matters as. Of the end of last week, eleven matters completed during quarter three. This does not include litigation matters. But as far as the where where the numbers stand, this is pretty consistent with quarter two. Particularly the the active matter number in the in the inflow, if you will, across our desk. We had a. Pretty high volume in 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 Q one, Q two was was less than Q one and in Q three is kind of right in line with. With Q two. Just a few of the examples of of items that that we're working on. At this point in time and and over the last quarter, so. I know that July can feel like ages ago, but it was during Q three and. It was during that time that we worked on the declaration of the state of emergency as as council, I'm sure recalls in response to. The high temperatures and dry conditions. We also put in place the fireworks spend by resolution. I raised that because. I want to give credit to a few folks on on staff and. You know, certainly getting the the word out about the about the ban, about the state of emergency, Lacy DiGraff and her team making announcements. And then I want to give a big, big thank you to Chief Kosmiki and N D P D as far as. Carrying out, being out in the community with the band. The chief was in constant communication with me as we worked to get. The language for the state of emergency and the resolution in place and. He was just outstanding to work with and 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 I understand that the comparatively speaking, the fourth of July was. Was in the subsequent days were were fairly quiet comparatively in Newburgh. So big shout out to to chief and the department. The next item is the due diligence work on the West Rock property. I know that council's familiar with this as well. You know, Doug Rux and his team, Karen Hoffman, her team, they've been driving. As as far as that process with the property acquisition and the work, our our role has been, you know, in a supportive role and right now. At least through quarter three, we worked on some of the due diligence behind that. So the city recently entered into a. Environmental site assessment, phase one with Alpha Environmental. There's also a title due diligence work where we were in a supportive role. On on those items, so so that. Transaction is 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 progressing and covered quite a bit of ground in in Q three. Again, you know, with item C, credit to Doug Rux and his team, the. Just as a refresher, and Doug can correct me if I'm butchering the the acronym here, but the new AGMA is. The Intergovernmental Agreement between the city of Newburgh and Yamhill County. That governs how the city and the county will provide urban services and make land use decisions. Within the urban growth boundary and the urban reserve area in the Newburgh area of influence. That agreement also set up. New Mac, the Newburgh Urban Area Management Commission. And that body is, you know, is or deals with governing how the. How various land use determinations will be made. Those documents, the new AGMA, the new AGMA and the organizational documents for New Mac. Hadn't been updated since about two thousand, so they're a couple decades old. There's been quite a bit of. Updates in the law and and other regulations over that twenty year plus period. So so. Our team has been supporting Doug and 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 his team. With 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 that work and updating those documents. And a huge shout out to Sue Ryan, city recorder, the keeper of all documents. She's been able to really guide us here as far as identifying the. Me digging up some some very old meeting minutes and helping us piece together the. You know, how the organization did work and function and and helping us with identifying next steps. Item D and strategizing for advancement on on urban renewal. Of course, council knows we've we've discussed that as well. As far as next steps and. Looking at the urban renewal plan, updates to the urban renewal plan to make advancements there. And then, of course, our our contract work has been has been steady from a number of different departments within the city. Just a few examples of some of the services and consultant agreements that we've been supporting the city on negotiating. On behalf of the city, a few examples there related to communications and strategic planning, citizens rate review. As far as the the final quarter of the calendar year and what we. See coming, again, this is just a few few examples, but. We're working on some items as that are related to unit clarification. With the Newburgh Dundee Public Safety Association, we do anticipate similar to to the work. We did in support of the bargaining with F S M E. There will be similar kind of supportive role or process with the Public Safety Association. The council, I suspect recalls that we gave a presentation in August of this year. About procurement policies and practices. We've been working on advancement of the procurement policy. But also the development of the documentation, solicitation documentation in connection with. Purchasing done by the by the city. And so here, I I do want to pause and and give a big shout out. Particularly with the development of the documentation on. You know, contract documents, construction documents, Karen Hoffman, Brett Music and Paul Chu have worked. With your legal team through a number of marathon sessions to cultivate and develop. A set of contract documents that. Are beneficial to the city, puts the city in in a strong position contractually with respect to upcoming. Projects, particularly in the capital improvement space. And so that. Working through indemnity provisions and and whatnot with lawyers is is not always at the top of folks' list, but but they have done that and they've they've been. They've been great to work with. So we do anticipate wrapping up the 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 development of those documents and and. wrapping up the 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 development of those documents in in Q four. Advancement of the redistricting process, council suspect also recalls that in August of this year, Sue and I gave a presentation on legislative redistricting. There have been advancements since that that presentation, as far as the census data arriving, there have been also advancements with respect to, I'm sure folks have read in the news that the legislature, the state legislature approved new maps in response to the the data that came in. The city is working towards engaging the cog to to help with that redistricting process at the local level and and so more to come on that front as well. Dan already touched very well on the on the COVID policies and guidance. We are waiting with bated breath on the emergency temporary standards and guidance that is supposed to be coming from OSHA. We were member, but it's supposed to be arriving just about any day now. And so we'll be working on, we'll be assisting as far as bargaining, of course, but also with the development of policies in 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 response to that guidance that comes from from OSHA. And then the last item is there, there are some municipal code updates. These are we've gotten some some good feedback from a number of members of staff at the city of areas where there could be some clarifications or improvements in the in the code. We've already received some feedback from from NDPD. We've received some feedback from from code compliance, engineering, public works as well. So we're looking to roll out some of those code updates here and and revise language, if you will, in in quarter four. I'll stop there. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to to answer those at this time.
Alright, folks, questions for City Attorney Walker? Not seeing any, James. We're letting you off easy, apparently. So there you go. Alright, alright, I've got six fifty two. Should we be back here? It's seven o'clock. Work for everybody? Seven o'clock it is. We'll be back at seven. And if anybody doesn't want to know the score of the Red Sox game, just tell me because, yeah, anyway, I'll see ya. Alright, hopefully that's better. Alright, good evening. This is the City Council Business Session for October eighteenth, twenty twenty one. Let's call the meeting to order. There is an agenda in Spanish on the city's website. A roll call, please, Sue.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor McBride.
Here.
Counselor Cofield. I must still be dealing with the washing machine. Counselor Yernell Holloman.
Here.
Counselor Martinez Plancarte.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Counselor Finley.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead because we have quite a busy session and just turn off the I'm going to put the view up so we don't see the people who aren't ready to come on yet. But you do have your first group here from Waste Management.
Alright, so let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, well, thank you. Alright, first item on our agenda this evening is our presentations, item four A, Waste Management's Continued Presentation on Proposed Rate Increases. So the good folks from Waste Management, I'll let you all take it away.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Rogers. Good evening, City Council members. My name is Dave Huber. I'm with Waste Management and this evening, yes, we have a a presentation in front of you. I've have my colleagues on on here as well. Gary Nelson should be on. He's our operations manager at the Newburgh site. I have Evan Burmester with us this evening. He's our area pricing manager that will go through some of the slides as well. And then I have Dean Kemfer, who is our municipal marketing manager that supports us. There he is. He's waving as well this evening. So good evening, everyone. Before I get started, I just want to just want to say how much we enjoy being a part of the Newburgh community. You know, we we truly you know, we we are truly honored to go down the streets every day servicing the customers and the citizens of the city of Newburgh. It's it's certainly our pleasure. And so we're we are, we're just happy to be a part of the community. So this evening, if we go to the next slide, I'll hit the just the talking points. Tonight, we're just going to go over Newburgh Services and Operations Report. Evan's gonna go into the details of the cost report, the detailed cost report. And then he'll also show a rate comparison on, you know, really what the community is is paying for their service in Newburgh compared to some other, you know, communities in close proximity. And then we'll basically, you know, you'll see at the end what our request is for a rate increase, which we don't take lightly. It's been a while since we've come in requesting a rating quick increase, but you'll see that. And then, of course, we'll open it up to any questions that you may have. So with that, if you want to go to the next slide up, I'm going to pass it over to Gary Nelson and let him, you know, hit the hit the detailed operations here.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Well, just to start with, I just want to touch base on what we do at the Newburgh operations. So our Newburgh District services the city of Newburgh, the city of Dundee and all of Yamhill County. The city of Newburgh takes up seventy percent of what we do for our business, and that includes not only our hauling operation, but also our our transfer station operation. Our operation consists of twenty one family wage jobs, and we've actually added an additional transfer station employee since this slide deck went out. So we actually have twenty two family wage jobs now. Now is eleven drivers, seven transfer station employees and four general support. And Evan, if you want to go to the next slide. So the services for just the city of Newburgh, our residential services include six thousand three hundred seventy nine customers, and that is up from six thousand two hundred and thirty in twenty nineteen. Our garbage service is a weekly service. It includes various sizes of thirty five, sixty five, ninety five gallon container. And those are all volume based rates. Our recycling is an every other week collection, and that is a ninety five gallon container. Our yard debris is also an every other week collection opposite of recycling. And our glass recycling currently has three thousand two hundred and thirty one customers are there in the program, and all of those roll cards are provided by WM. Our commercial services, we currently service five hundred and thirty three customers, and that's down from five hundred and forty four customers in twenty nineteen. And our collection frequency is designed to meet the needs of the customer for both garbage and recycling, and our containers are provided to the customer. Industrial services, we had two thousand three hundred and thirty six halls. And that is down from two thousand one hundred and seventy seven halls in in twenty nineteen. And our Dropbox services are are similar to our commercial services that we is designed to meet the needs of the customer. And obviously, those numbers for commercial and industrial, you're you're seeing there, that's in large part due to the COVID crisis in twenty twenty. That's that's those numbers you're seeing. We've we've seen an uptick since then in twenty twenty one, but really it's it's been, it was a, it was a long year, as everyone knows, in in twenty twenty, and it was it was a rough year, but it's really been such a great learning experience for me, being in Newburgh, and such a pleasure to to service this community and really learn about the needs of the customers out here. I previously worked in Portland for a Portland hauling operation, and I'm I'm local to the Newburgh area. So it's really been great to to get back to my roots and really see this community grow and see see it really for for me, come on board at a time when COVID first hit and really get to experience, unfortunately, the the pains and struggles that that everyone experienced and and really to see this this community thrive and and really grow. And with that, I believe we're on to Evan.
Evan. Evan, Dean, the slide presentation isn't showing. I wonder if we could get that going. Um, interesting. I I was seeing it. I wasn't sure.
I I had put it up. So Rick was seeing it. I'm not sure why you're not able to see it.
Okay, thank you.
Evan, do you want to try sharing instead of?
Sure, yeah. Can everybody see my screen now? Perfect. So as you can see, we, this is a a summary of our detailed cost report we submit to the city of Newburgh every March. You can see our our revenue for commercial and residential both grew slightly while did have a large drop off related to the roll off line of business as kind of Gary showed with the with the drop off in halls. With that, with some of the changes we saw, we did see increased disposal costs. Part of that's, part of that's due, obviously, to the increases associated with more tonnage at our residential line of business as those customers were were or more customers were home now with the work from home orders that happened during the year, and and we're continuing to see that even in in twenty twenty one, although not to the same degree. You can kind of see our our change in expenses year over year as well, and then what we're projecting forward for twenty twenty one. At the time when we submitted our our rated rate rate increase request, we hadn't really seen the impacts of the inflation that's occurring now. I believe we were forecast CPI at the time was one point seven percent. And that goes into kind of my next slide. We, this is kind of a breakdown of our rate increase requests over the last five years. Our last rate increase was actually in July of two thousand and sixteen for three percent. And you can kind of see how CPI over those years has compared. So I think we've done a a good job of controlling our costs over the last five years for sure, and and making sure we're operating as efficiently as possible for the city of Newburgh and and keeping rates as low as possible. Speaking of our rates, I do have a great comparison here for, oh, sorry about that. For Newburgh as well as McMinnville, Yamhill County, Carlton and the city of Dundee. You can see the city of Newburgh's rates are fairly competitive. They're some of the lowest in the area, even with the with the increase as well as the services that the city receives from from Waste Management. Now, the rates between commercial and residential can obviously differ based off of the 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 political will of the council for whether they they primarily want to save some money for residential customers or commercial or vice versa. So this is kind of a breakdown between our most common levels of service for residential and commercial services, as well as the services that are included between mixed recycling, yard debris and then glass. And so typically, when we uh, when we put for, when we submit our detailed cost report, we shoot for a target of ten percent. In order to achieve that target based off of our twenty twenty costs, that would require a three point seven percent rate adjustment. And we're requesting the city council to approve that effective for December first, twenty twenty one. And with that, I can, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Questions, anyone? Let's see, I'll start with one. I know at one point we were talking about kitchen kitchen waste being included in the yard debris. Is that included in this rate, the three point seven percent then?
That's not included in this rate. I I think Gary and Dave might have a little more information about this, but this is just strictly the the rate increase associated with our cost of service.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Other questions, folks? Alright. Alright. Okay, Mike, yep.
So is the idea that you you look at the overall rate once every five years or?
No, we we so we submit a a detailed cost report annually to the city of Newburgh. And typically, what happens is we'll only request an increase if we fall outside a specified range, typically eight to twelve percent. We'll request a a rate review, basically. And so we've operated within that range since our last rate increase in July twenty sixteen.
Alright, other questions, folks? Alright, Stephanie.
Yeah, this is kind of a convoluted question, but I'm wondering, as Mayor Rogers asked, we had talked about adding to the yard debris, and I'm wondering if something like that were to happen for us, if we had decided to do something like that, would that offset anything around this increase? So would we be looking at this increase and the increase that comes with adding that? Or is there a way to sort of combine the two to make it not quite as big of an increase to have that service added?
Yeah, this is Dean Kemfer. I'll field that question. Good question. That question was presented to us and we we did do a survey and that 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 program, adding the commercial, the food waste to the yard debris, would increase the costs both to the processing as well as the where we have to transport it to the processor. And that question was tabled because there was questions from the city wanting to do a survey to see what the what the citizens preference was for that. So we we tabled that and we brought this rate increase forward to you at this time, but we can, we can add that at a later date if the will of the the council and the citizens want that added service.
Dean, if I might ask, who who was going to, can you remind me who was going to conduct the survey? Was that you all?
Well, we we did the first survey and then we were in discussions with the city as to doing a more detailed survey, but there wasn't any clear direction as to who was going to take that on.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't want to speak for the rest of the council, but I think there was a fair amount of interest in that subject at the time. So yeah. I don't know, folks, do you want to give an indication? Do you want to hear more about this idea of the kitchen waste going with the yard debris? Or what? Counselor Finley?
Yeah, I guess I wouldn't really be ready to make a decision on this until I have more information on that. It feels like that got set aside, and I would hate to do an increase now without putting thought into that and then finding out that maybe we could have been a little more responsible around combining these two. So I definitely would like more information on that before I'm ready to sort of make a decision around increase because I know there were several options that included either having the the kitchen box that went with it and not and those kinds of things. And so I know there was sort of like a menu of prices, and I'd be interested to see what that menu looks like with this combined in there to see if we can make sure that we're we're doing our best for our constituents.
You know, and sort of to tag on to that as well, that, you know, the thought would be that if it's three point seven percent what you're seeking now, what is that? I think I recall eighty five cents a month. What that, what does that do to the percentage would probably be of interest, I would think. And then Counselor McBride.
So I I I'm not really interested in looking to see what that would be because I know it's going to cost more. And although I I appreciate, you know, I don't like increases in in anything for for anybody, but that's not, you know, normal. But I do appreciate that it has been five years. And so I I my hat's off to Waste Management for handling their business in a very, I think, responsible way. I'm okay with the rate increase right now. We can look at the other on down the road, I think, instead of packaging it all together because I just don't want to have too big of a hit. And right now, we can, if you don't have a garbage disposal, you can put it in the garbage can instead of mixing it with with the other stuff. So that's kind of where I stand on it.
Counselor Yernell Holloman. Counselor Yonel Holoman?
I guess I just wondered how long it from waste management perspective, how long it would take to come back with a figure of, you know, the 4.2% increase. What does the, what does it go from? To what percentage to include the the food waste? If it's not a super long timeline, then I was interested in seeing that as Stephanie stated.
Yeah, so if I, if I remember correctly, when we when we presented to the council back earlier this summer, I believe we were requesting somewhere in the neighborhood of additional dollar per customer and then it it varied on if there was a kitchen cart included. So it it right now it looks like our most common service would be going up about 80 cents per month. So it would be, you know, slightly more than than double the rate. We can get you something more official for sure in the future. But at the time, I I I think the results of the survey were somewhat inconclusive because of the 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 number of constituents we did survey. So I think there was some interest in in expanding that. And that's why we came back with just the just the rate increase request without the food waste included. Yeah, if if I can add to that, too, Evan pretty much nailed that right on. I think our our goal here was, you know, at least for this evening, you know, here's here's what what we really are requesting to get us back in into the range. However, we are interested in in the food waste in, you know, adding that to the yard debris program for the city. And yeah, I think Evan's right. I think it was, you know, anywhere from 80 cents to a dollar more depending on, you know, if we provided the kitchen pails. But we also thought, well, you know, you know, based off the conversations that we had with the city councillors at the last meeting and the mayor, it would probably be a good idea to, you know, do another survey for the citizens and, you know, because the first one we did do, we just, there wasn't a lot of participation. And and I know it can be, it can be difficult sometimes to get participation on those surveys. But I think we both agree that we'd like to see a little bit more participation and just get the get the message out to the community to really get a feel on whether or not they'd be okay with another, you know, 80 cents to a dollar more per month increase for that for that particular service.
Right, if if math serves, I think that looks like about a 7.7% increase if we included 85 cents based on what you're looking at now, at least if I can do the math. But anyway, Counselor Bacon, did you have a question?
He answered it. I was going to ask about the results of their survey. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions, folks? I just have one that's semi-related. At one point, we were talking about recycling stretchy plastic household batteries and styrofoam at the recycling center. When do you think that might happen, Dave? Or whomever?
Yes, no, good. I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor. We we did discuss that as well at the last meeting with the city and we are looking to get that into the recycling facility. We're we're planning to get that in here this next month in November for some of that hard to recycle items that we we discussed, batteries, film, plastic and styrofoam. So coming soon.
Good. Well, again, that'd be good news to get out to the to the community and and to the good folks with Sustainable Newburgh as well. I'm sure would be very interested to hear on on all of this. All right. Any other questions or comments, folks? All right. Well, to all of you, to Gary, Evan, Dean and Dave, thank you very much. And Gary, welcome back to the area, right? We're happy to have you back. So there you go. All right, moving on to the next item, next presentation on our agenda, the Visit Newburgh Annual Audit for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Good evening, Leslie.
Good evening, Mayor Rogers. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our fiscal year annual audit report. I'd like to welcome Todd Massinger, who is our auditor with Hoffman, Stewart and Schmidt. And he will be available to present the report this evening.
That sounds like my cue. Hello, everyone. And I just did see the slide up there that just sort of puts out three major points that I wanted to make for this. Indeed, our firm did conduct the the audit for Visit Newburgh for its fiscal year ended June 30, 2021. So the period spanning July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. This is our second year doing the audit. I think the second year that Visit Newburgh has had an audit. And so like last year, the basis of accounting, we talked about this a bit, it's a cash basis of accounting. So the financial statements for that organization really just comprised the cash receipts during the year categorized. Cash dispersments during the year also categorized and then presenting the beginning and ending cash balance for the period. Total cash receipts for the year were about $165,000. Obviously, the impact of the pandemic on the lodging tax collections significant. But included in that $165,000 of total receipts were the proceeds from a paycheck protection program loan of $52,000. Total dispersments for the period were about $233,000. So there was a deficit of dispersments over over receipts, or I guess an excess of dispersments over receipts of about $68,000. And so total cash and certificates of deposit, the reserve, if you will, for the organization at the end of its fiscal year is $409,000. Our report on the financial statements is what we call an unmodified, a clean opinion on the financial statement. Means based on the audit work that we did, we think the financial statement and related footnote disclosures are fair and accurate in accordance with the cash basis of accounting. And then also, I will say, we also have a separate communication with those charged with governance that we're required to do. And we presented that to the to the organization's board of directors. But it was really a smooth audit process. Once again, accounting records are organized, all the documentation that we asked to see was made available to us very quickly. And so in fact, the audit's been done for for quite some time. I think we issued in the middle of August. It was a very, a very smooth sailing audit process. No internal control concerns on our part in doing the audit. It was, like I say, smooth, smooth audit process. Any questions I can answer for anyone about the audit or I suspect you've seen the report?
All right, folks, any any questions? No, always like to see the line fairly represented in all material respects. So that's always a nice line to see in an audit. So there you go.
That's our line, yep.
That's your line. That's your tagline right there.
Yep.
All right. Anything else, folks? All right, anything to add, Leslie?
I do not have anything to add. Thank you, Todd. Appreciate you being here to present this evening.
All right. Well, thank you all. I'm hearing no. Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Leslie. Have a have a good evening. All right, we've just ended the presentations. I don't believe we have public comment, but I will double check with our city recorder to make sure.
Sorry, you have a motion before you in your staff report for to accept the audit report?
Oh, we do. Okay, it's under a presentation, but let's accept it then. All right, can I get a motion to that effect, folks?
I believe that we accept the audit report as presented.
Second.
Second from Denise. All right, all in favor signify by raising your hand. All opposed, same sign. Lisa, I can't see you. Well, we'll check back. We'll check back with Elise on that one if we can. So okay, all right, thank you. Now a question, folks, no public comments, right, Sue?
That is correct. No one did, no one registered for public comment.
All right, now, if I could ask, probably Doug and Dan, is there a chance we could move item seven until after the items in A and B? Just because I know we've got most of the people on here, I think.
I have no concerns with changing that order.
Okay, no, okay. So why don't we do that then? If if everyone is here for item 8A, this is ordinance 2021-2878, an ordinance annexing 29.38 acres consisting of five parcels. I will go into that, but first I will say that this, folks, is a this is a quasi judicial land use public hearing procedure. So these are not something that we see all the time. Tonight, we happen to have two. Who knew, right? So here we go. So for those listening or who may be participating, let me just run down the the agenda as to how these are run. So we open the public hearing, we announce the purpose, we called in for any exemptions or or conflicts of interest. Our city attorney, James Walker, then provides legal announcements. We move into the staff report. From there, we have public testimony. We have testimony for both proponents and opponents, five minutes each. And then we have a period for rebuttal if there is any. And again, that doesn't mean that people have to speak necessarily, but that is available. Then we can ask questions of the proponents and opponents. Any public agency letters or comments can be mentioned after that. Closed public testimony. We again hear from the city attorney, final comments, and then we deliberate. So that is the general procedure, if that makes sense. And I know on this one particularly, we've got a number of parties that are owners of land in this action. So I think if I'm, we've got Goodell, Baker, Stonebrick and the city of Newburgh is my understanding. So so that is it. Any questions on the process before we start in? Okay, seeing none. All right, this public hearing is now open. The, as mentioned, the port, the purposes for ordinance 2021-2878, an ordinance annexing 29.38 acres consisting of five parcels, plus the area of the adjacent right of way into Newburgh city limits. And I will let the rest of the addresses compare in the presentation. All right, at this point, I'll call for abstentions, bias, ex parte contacts and objections to jurisdictions counselors. All right. Seeing no hands. We will now move on to the city attorney's legal announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certain announcements are required before the commencement of a quasi judicial land use hearing. This hearing deals with the annexation and change in zoning designation of 29.38 acres consisting of properties located at 1609 Northeast Waterfront Street, 712 Northeast 14th Street, 1610 Northeast Waterfront Street and two parcels south of Northeast 14th Street that I have no address. The announcement required by the Oregon revised statutes, ORS 197.763, is as follows. The applicable substantive criteria for the decision are listed in the staff report under exhibit B to ordinance number 2021-2878, which is attached to the council agenda. Testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described above or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation that you believe applies to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure to raise a constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The applicant who has the burden of proof may have at least seven days after the record is closed to submit final written argument. At the close of the testimony portion of the hearing, the applicant will have to decide if the applicant wishes to submit further written argument. The pertinent definitions with respect to that writer under ORS 197.763 are as follows. Argument means assertions and analysis regarding the satisfaction or violation of legal standards or policy believed relevant by the proponent to a decision. Argument does not include facts. Evidence means facts, documents, data or other information offered to demonstrate compliance or noncompliance with the standards believed by the proponent to be relevant to the decision. Any submission by the applicant must be limited to argument. No additional evidence can be submitted. If the applicant wishes to make final written argument, no further deliberation shall take place tonight. If the applicant waives that right, the council may proceed with deliberation. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the opening city attorney announcement.
All righty, thank you. And on to the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Doug Gruck, Community Development Director. So I will begin by entering the entire staff report, its exhibits and attachments into the record. So as the city attorney had indicated, is this is an annexation of five properties consisting of four separate different property owners. And it's in our riverfront area and its case file is annexation 21-0002. Next slide, Sue. Little background, so it's dimensions 29.38 acres. It does include some adjacent rights away and that would be on Northeast Waterfront Street and on Northeast 14th Street. As already been noted, the properties are at 1609 Northeast Waterfront, 1610 Northeast Waterfront and 712 Northeast 14th Street. Now, the city has two parcels in this. And at this time, those, since there's no improvements on those parcels, they do not have an address. We've listed the tax lots, map and map and lot numbers for the five parcels in this. And at the bottom of this slide are the property owners that have made those applications, which again does include the city of Newport. Next slide. This area already has comprehensive plan designations. These were applied when we went through the Riverfront Master Plan and it's implementing regulations. And so we have medium density, commercial and park. And each of those are have the subset of the Riverfront District applied to each one. Next slide. This is a map that shows the location. So on your left, the hatched area that's in red is that geography. So it's all on the south side of the bypass between River Street and over to College and then down on Waterfront Street. On the right hand side shows the what the zoning would be for this. So there would be that, again, that medium density. The red would be the commercial, which would be end up being a C4 with a riverfront designation and the green is community facility. Next slide. This is the corresponding comprehensive plan. So a visual, so again, the red is the commercial areas, the yellow off of Waterfront Street is median density. And then the P is the park. Again, all with a riverfront designation. Next slide. Utilities, difficult map, but there are utilities that are in proximity to the area that's proposed to be annexed. We have some two inch lines that can actually come down College Street to Waterfront and 14th Street. Those would need to be upsized. But we do have eight inch lines at Weatherly Way and College Street. And we have that's for water. We have water over at River Street at the railroad tracks. We have wastewater again in those locations that terminate just to the north of this annexation area. And then there is a storm water system that is in place as well. My storm on this map is the yellow color. Next slide. So the criteria 15250.020 have to be within the urban growth boundary. These parcels are. They need to be contiguous and they are contiguous, starting on the left side, which would be off of Northeast Waterfront Street. So it's contiguous to what will be developed as River Run Phase Three. Next slide. 15.250.030 complies with our comprehensive plan and the designations. And I've heard, already went through this with the maps. And we believe that that condition is met. The zoning that we already have the comp plan designations identified and in place for this area. And then I showed you the map, the corresponding zoning that would go with those comp plan designations. Next slide. 15250.030, this is section B1 and 2. This game goes back to the utility map that I showed you. So there is proximity for water services, sanitary sewer services. We also outreach to the Newburgh Dundee Police Department, Walter's Valley Fire and Rescue, CPRD and Newburgh School District. And they all would serve this particular area because it is within our urban growth boundary and they already serve these particular areas. Next slide. Planning Commission Recommendation, so the planning commission held their hearing. On September ninth, they developed a recommendation which is included in your packet. The full recommendation is an attachment five. But their recommendation was to approve this annexation in the corresponding R two C four and CF zoning. With that Riverfront District overlay designation. Next slide. So staff's recommendation is to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty one twenty eight seventy eight. And that is my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty, well, thank you very much. Time for public testimony, Sue, do we have anyone signed up for public testimony?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have anybody signed up for public testimony, although the applicant, the four applicants are present.
All right, and and thank you all for for being here this evening. What about public agency letters or comments, Sue?
Mr. Mayor, I have received no such written correspondence for this item.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public testimony portion of this hearing then, and the city attorney legal announcements, please.
So at this time, I'd like to give, like to ask each applicant if they will waive the seven day timeline to submit a final. Written argument. In connection with this with this hearing, so. I'm going to ask each applicant individually if they are willing to waive the the seven day timeline. So let's start with Ms. Goodell. Tamara Goodell.
Yes, I'm present.
All right, good evening, Ms. Goodell, just asking if you, as one of the applicants, are willing to waive the seven day timeline to submit a final written argument in connection with this hearing.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Goodell. And then moving on to. The representative for the Gary T Baker Trust. Not sure if Mr. Baker's on.
Yeah, I'm Todd Baker, and I'm present.
Excellent, and Mr. Baker, are you also willing to waive the seven day timeline?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. And then to Mr. and Mrs. Stonebrink. Oh, I see, I see your picture there, Ms. Stonebrink, I think you're muted.
This is all new to me. You get old, you don't know all this technology.
All good, all good, we're all, we're all learning our way here on Zoom. Miss Stonebrink, I'm just asking if you're willing also to waive the seven day timeline for submitting a final written argument.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Stonebrink. And and then, Mr. Rux, can I ask you on behalf of the the city?
We waive as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rux. Post hearing announcements, if the decision is not made tonight and continued to another date. The record could be reopened at that later date by motion of the council. Therefore, do not assume no further evidence will be taken. If the decision is made tonight, the council has the authority to reconsider the decision following proper procedure. This motion to reconsider is usually required to be made at the next meeting of the city council. The fact that the council could reconsider their decision does not affect the length of time for appeal of that decision. And that concludes the city attorney closing announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty, well, thank you very much. Any questions, counselors of Mr. Rux, and regarding his presentation? Okay. All right, seeing none. I will entertain a motion, remember, we've got the wave in the second reading, right? We've gotten approval from that. I think I recall my title only as well, if I'm following along. So if someone would like to make a motion, Denise, there you go.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading.
Okay. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, second from Council McBride. All in favor in waiving the second reading, signify by raising your hand. Alrighty, looks like we got everybody, Sue. All right, and now a motion. For the item itself.
I can continue on.
Yes, you can.
Yes. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty one twenty eight seventy eight and read by title only.
And at least with a second. Any further discussion? All right, a voice vote, Sue. Okay, voice vote it is.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, James.
Oh, just wanted to confirm that you'd like me to read by title only. Excellent, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and in front of. So in front of the council for adoption is ordinance number twenty twenty one dash two eight seven eight. An ordinance annexing twenty nine point three eight acres consisting of five parcels, plus the area of the adjacent right of way into the city. Or into the Newburg City Limits. At one six zero nine Northeast Waterfront Street, seven one two Northeast Fourteenth Street, one six one zero Northeast Waterfront Street. And two parcels south of Northeast Fourteenth Street that have no address. And changing the zoning from Yamhill County, V L D R five H I M R dash two and P W S to Newburg. R dash two slash R D. C dash four slash R D. CF slash R D. And the following lot numbers, R three. Two three zero dash zero zero four zero one. R three two three zero dash zero zero one zero zero. R three two three zero dash zero zero two zero zero. R three two two nine dash zero two seven zero zero. And R three two two nine dash zero two eight zero zero.
Awesome, thank you. All right, are we ready for the the vote, Sue?
Councilor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor, you're in the hall of men?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Finley?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor, Counselor Colefield is absent, so it's six zero one.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Stonebrink, Ms. Goodell, and Mr. Baker, thank you very much for being here. And thank you for helping with the future Riverfront Development, so thank you, thank you very much. And have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright. Alright, let's move on to our next item on our agenda. Okay, thank you. This is item eight B ordered, and again, this is a quasi judicial land use public hearing. So order twenty twenty one dash forty two, an order affirming planning commission order twenty twenty one O six on the appeal of conditional use permit, C U P twenty one dash zero zero one. For property located at four twelve West Fifth Street. All right, so again, as mentioned earlier, that we have a procedure with a quasi judicial land use hearing. So we will go through that now. So I'm going to now open the public hearing, I announced the purpose earlier, and the testimony procedure, proponents and opponents will each have five minutes each. And then the principal proponent will have a time to rebut another five minutes, any comments made by an opponent. And then from there, we'll have questions from the floor, public agencies, and any other public comment, and we'll close the hearing and deliberate after that. All right, any questions on the procedure, anyone? Okay, all right. So I've now opened the public hearing, the purpose again is for order twenty twenty one dash forty two, affirming planning commission order twenty twenty one dash O six. All right. Call for abstentions, bias, ex parte contact, and objections to jurisdiction, counselors. All right, not hearing any at the moment. City Attorney Legal Announcements, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certain announcements are required before the commencement of a quasi judicial land use hearing. This hearing deals with the appeal of a conditional use permit approval for vacation rental home located at four one two West Fifth Street. The announcement required by the Oregon revised statutes, ORS one ninety seven dot seven six three is as follows. One. The applicable substantive criteria for the decision are listed in the staff report under exhibit A to order number twenty twenty one dash forty two, which is attached to the council agenda. Two, testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria directed above or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation that you believe applies to this decision. Three, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker. And the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. Four, failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government. Or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The applicant who has the burden of proof may have at least seven days after the record is closed to submit final written argument. At the close of the testimony portion of the hearing, the applicant will have to decide. If the applicant wishes to submit further written argument. And the pertinent definitions under ORS one ninety seven dot seven six three are as follows. Argument means assertions and analysis regarding the satisfaction or violation of legal standards or policy. Believed relevant by the proponent to a decision. Argument does not include facts. And evidence means facts, documents, data, or other information offered to demonstrate compliance or noncompliance with the standards believed by the proponent to be relevant to the decision. Any submission by the applicant must be limited to argument, no additional evidence can be submitted. If the applicant wishes to make final written argument, no further deliberation shall take place tonight. If the applicant waves that right, the council may proceed with deliberation. That concludes the opening announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, all right, and then I think we are ready for the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Doug Rux, Community Development Director. I will begin by entering the entire staff report, its exhibits and attachments into the record. As our legal counsel has indicated, this is an appeal. Of a vacation rental at four twelve West Fifth Street. The planning commission did review this case earlier, and I'll get into more detail on that later. Next slide, please. So a little background. Back one side. Other, other, other way backwards, so thank you.
I'm sorry, it's not behaving.
There we go. So the applicant owners in this case are Lori Heinz and Roy Neff. This is again a C U P approval. There is an existing five bedroom, single family home that's on the property, it's at four twelve West Fifth. Tax lots are three two one nine C A dash zero zero one zero zero. Zoning on the property is low density residential, it also has a stream corridor designation. On the south side of the property, and it is within the airport overlay. The applicable criteria for this case are fifteen point two two five O six O, which is the conditional use permit criteria. So this started as a type three review before the planning commission. Other criteria that apply are fifteen point four four five three hundred through three fifty, which is our vacation rental home standards. Next slide. So the location in the zoning, the property bounded in red is the subject property at four twelve. Next slide. This is a street view of the property from West Fifth Street. Next slide. Right of way improvements. So as indicated in your packet, there was a requirement for dedication of approximately three feet of right of way along West Fifth Street. Our standards are having twenty eight feet of right of way, and right now. For this particular property that was deficient. There is a retaining wall, there may need to be an encroachment permit for that. Retaining wall to remain, that's something Brett Music is with us this evening, if there's any questions regarding that. There was a requirement for a ten foot wide public utility easement across the front of the property. And then there is another requirement for a non remonstrance agreement for eventual frontage improvements to West Fifth Street. Next slide. Criteria fifteen point two two five O six O. So this is dealing with the location, size, design, and operating characteristics. As I've noted, is that it's an existing single family home, it's about a half mile coming to the southwest of downtown. It's similar to other regular residential uses that are in this immediate area. And that there are two off street parking spaces provided on the site. Next slide. And this is fifteen point two two five O six O B. And this one deals with location design and site planning of the proposed development. Be convenient and functional, living, working, shopping, or civic environment. Attractive. And then C is the proposed development will be consistent with this code. So. The finding that we had been prepared for the planning commission that's brought forward to the city council, it's attractive location. For a vacation rental is proximate to downtown Newburgh and other regional attractions. There are two existing parking spaces located on this site. And is compatible with other residential uses of similar size and scope. That are either rented or owned in this area. Next slide. These are the vacation rental criteria. It must be a single family dwelling, it is four twelve West Fifth is a single family dwelling. They will have to register with the city. And pay the transient lodging tax. That process is handled by our finance department. There is a requirement in our code that you have to have two off street parking spaces, and I've alluded to, there are two. The maximum occupancy of this vacation rental would be ten, which is two per bedroom, which is equates back to the five bedrooms. There's requirements in our code that says you cannot use RVs or tents or temporary shelters. On the property as part of the vacation rental. There is a requirement for a posting of a sign, typically those go near the front door inside the unit. And they're required to provide contact information for police. Our vacation rental standards have to be listed out, maximum occupancy. When the garbage pickup day is going to occur, in this case, it's on a Tuesday. Next slide. So. The beginning, I mentioned planning commission, so the planning commission held its initial evidentiary hearing on this case on July eighth of twenty twenty one. That hearing was continued to August twelfth of twenty twenty one. The record was also left open for additional comments to be submitted, and all of that material is in your packet this evening. On August twelfth, the planning commission did review order twenty twenty one dash O six. Next slide. This particular case was appealed by Mr. Jonathan Umpley, and that occurred on August twenty sixth. He raised three issues. One is that it failed to comply with Newburgh Development Code fifteen point two two five O six O A. And O six O B. And additionally, it failed to comply with fifteen point two two five O six O C, twelve point O five point O nine O. And fifteen point five O five point O three O. All that material again is in your packet for this evening. Next slide. So staff's recommendation, which we're bringing forward, the planning commission's. Order on this particular case is to adopt order twenty twenty one dash forty two, which approves the requested conditional use permit. With the attached conditions of approval in attachment nine, exhibit B of the planning commission order twenty twenty one dash O six. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Alrighty, well, thank you very much, we're now on to the public testimony section, I'd like to offer five minutes to proponents and opponents on this, and then we'll have a rebuttal. And I understand, from what I understand, we, Jonathan Umpley, the appellant is being represented also by Andrew Stamp, I don't know if Mr. Stamp is on the call. And then Lori Heinz and Roy Neff are being represented by attorney Tony Aiello. If I pronounced that correctly, I hope, Tony.
Yes, you're one of the few.
All right, all right, all right. So why don't, why don't we start actually, any thought, Doug, as to who's the proponent and who the opponent is on this?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, oh, go ahead, Doug.
James, I was gonna let you go ahead and respond to that.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if we're, we're gonna start with the the proponents, so I would, I would start with the the applicants represented by Mr. Aiello.
Okay, and you have five minutes, folks, thank you.
Thank you. As stated, my name is Tony Aiello, and I represent applicants Lori Heinz and Roy Neff with regard to this conditional use permit application and appeal. I had the opportunity to provide a written response to Mr. Umpley's appeal in my September twenty ninth letter, so I'm gonna try to keep my initial remarks short. However, I do want to make a few observations and comments. The question before the council today is whether Ms. Heinz. The question before the council today is whether Ms. Hines' application and the planning commission's written decision. Meet the approval criteria required by the Newburgh Code. To this end, the staff report thoroughly, and I would say excellent, excellently addresses each and every approval criterion. Made and made thoughtful findings of fact which support approval. Likewise, the planning commission agreed that Ms. Hines' application meets all applicable criteria and unanimously voted. To approve Ms. Hines' application. Meanwhile, most if not all of the concerns expressed by neighbors do not address the approval criteria for a conditional use permit or the Newburgh Code. Those concerns which did address the code largely center around Ms. Hines' fence, which is not an approval criterion. Others focused on, on a perceived failure by the city of Newburgh itself to improve West Fifth Street. This also is not an approval criterion. A denial based on non criterion is a reversible error pursuant to O R S one nine, seven, eight, three, five. Mr. Umfleet and his attorney, as well as other neighbors, have chosen to focus in what I see as doom and gloom, uh, that they have foretold surrounding this use. Neighbors have likened Ms. Hines' proposed use to that of a frat house and boldly proclaimed. That Ms. Hines' guests will be young, drunk, loud and stoned. This conclusion should be news to all of you as there are north of a dozen short term rentals operating in Newburgh on Airbnb alone. As of this morning, when I rechecked. Yet the city has not received a single complaint or reported negative impact since it began regulating vacation rental properties in two thousand thirteen. This conclusion was definitely news to Ms. Hines. Who knows better than anyone, the, the class of guests she rents to. Contrary to these assumptions, Ms. Hines does not rent to the young party crowd. She's a professional woman who has a wildly successful career in real estate and in owning her own business. She has provided you with her master lodging agreement, which is in your materials. Um, and that's just one of the tools she relies to protect her investment, her business, and to ensure she is a good neighbor. Ms. Hines' proposed use is a residential use. It is also a conditional use, meaning its approval is conditioned on meeting the approval criteria. And if necessary, the imposition of additional conditions. I look forward to our discussion tonight. Thank you for your time and careful consideration. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Aiello, thank you. Thank you very much. Did any of the other proponents wish to speak? Uh, Ms. Hines or? Nope. All right, uh, seeing none, let's move on to the opponent, uh, Mr. Umfleet, um, or your representative, Mr. Stamp.
I don't think Andrew Stamp is here tonight, so I will, uh, proceed.
Thank you.
Uh, did the, uh, council get the letter that was submitted by Andrew Stamp today?
Um, I know I saw it. I don't know if it was Sue. How was it handled on the public record? Did you see that letter?
I did not receive a letter today, Doug.
I did not receive a letter today.
I mean, I think I did. It may have only been sent to city council, though, Mr. Umfleet.
Uh, so. Is that entered into record or what's the best way to handle this?
Yeah, let me, yeah, one second. Sue and or James, a letter that was submitted, I, I think this afternoon.
I have, I have not received the, the letter from Mr. Stamp either. And so it, it, um, it wouldn't be in, included in the record at this time. Um, did it, it's mine, is, did it just arrive today? Is that?
Yes.
Accurate? Okay. And in the, in the content of that letter, is that, um, uh? Uh, additional arguments that weren't raised with the planning commission or?
Um, I maybe. There are some different things there. Perhaps some new information.
Okay, well, uh, what I'll say at this time is that, uh, from a procedural standpoint, the council can make a decision on whether they want to open up. Uh, the opportunity for that letter to be admitted into the record. If the council, uh, elects to admit that into the record, then there is a need to have, uh, at least a seven day period where. The, um, proponents and their council could have an opportunity to see that letter and respond to it.
All right.
But at this.
Oh, yeah.
But at, at, at this time, Mr. Mayor, I would submit that we proceed with the, the testimony from the opponents and then I, I do know that there will be an opportunity for rebuttal as well by the, by the proponents.
Okay, uh, sounds good. Uh, Mr. Umfleet, if you could continue, um, that would be great.
Okay. So let me just say that everything we've talked about tonight talks about enforcement of code and there's a lot of Newburgh municipal code. That's involved in, uh, short term rentals, vacation rentals, and everything that's been discussed. And I will say this, I have made complaints to the city's compliance officer. And he has not addressed any issues and even his outgoing voicemail plainly states, and I quote. He is only responding to imminent threats to public safety until everything returns to normal. Your paralegal, Robin Steele, even has stated, and I quote. The city of Newburgh is working through times with limited resources and code and compliance. And trying to disperse workload, which is pretty much impossible, end quote. And since city employees have basically admitted to not being able to enforce code. I believe it's reckless and irresponsible for the city of Newburgh. To continue to go down the path of issuing conditional use permits for things like this that can easily generate nuisance complaints. So if the kid, city cannot enforce municipal code during the COVID pandemic until things return to normal. Then I strongly recommend and suggest that the city should have a moratorium on issuing conditional use permits during this time. Because if there's no way to enforce codes, the citizens of Newburgh have no recourse. There's no way to manage this. There's no way to. Uh, make sure things are done properly and in accordance with that. Uh, so that's one of the many reasons that I oppose, um, this application.
All right, uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Umfleet, is there anyone else who's an opponent who would like to speak?
Not that I'm aware of. I think I was the only one who got a Zoom invite to this.
Okay. All right, um, all right, a rebuttal from the principal proponent, uh, Mr. I O, if you, if you'd like.
Uh, yes, uh, so, uh, again, um, Newburgh has been regulating. Uh, short term rental, vacation rental since two thousand thirteen, and there's not been a single complaint. You know, a, a lot of the focus below was, uh, again doom and gloom about, uh, short term rentals. And the type of people who rent them and stay as guests. We, we find that that's not borne out by the evidence and it's definitely not borne out by the way Ms. Hines runs her, uh, her rental properties. Included in your materials is a master lodging agreement, which addresses noise. Um, I would add that, uh, Newburgh, uh, code enforcement. Is, uh, the, the ability of Newburgh to enforce its codes, codes is not an approval criterion. Uh, and then we would like to, uh, just record our objection, um, for any new materials. We would, uh, we would like to register that objection. I, I don't think they're timely, uh, to be sent today or let alone after the hearing. So I'd just like to record that objection for the record. And I would be glad to take any of the council's questions.
All right, uh, council, do let's start with, uh, questions of proponents. If there's any questions for Mr. I O. All right, seeing none. What about questions of the opponent for, for Mr. Umfleet? Okay, again, seeing none. Um, suited, uh, go ahead, Mike.
So I was just wondering, um. I'm just trying to be fair in this. I'm just wondering why, Mr. Umfleet. Uh, did you wait till today to, to get any additional information? To the, to the council? I mean, there is kind of a deadline, I think, that we have on something like this.
I don't think my attorney received that letter.
I see. Okay.
That's the reason.
Sorry, um, other questions, folks?
Mr. Mayor, I, I did see, um, Mr. Smith, Tyler Smith's hand, uh, and I'm not sure if he still wishes to, wishes to comment, but.
I'm sorry. And, and who do you represent, Mr. Smith?
Uh, the applicant, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you.
We actually did, did want to just state the same, uh, objection that anything that's not in the record. Um, has been put in the record shouldn't be considered. It's what we wanted to point out. So if it hasn't been put in the record, we don't believe it should be considered by the council today.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions, folks? Okay, um, suited, uh, Mr. Counselor McBride.
Uh, sorry. So. Would this fall under? I, I, I know the, the attorney, Mr. Aiello stated that there hasn't been any complaints. Do we have anybody on staff? Doug, can you, uh, adhere to that? I mean, I, I wouldn't know. So I. I'm just wanting to verify that.
Uh, Councilman McBride, since, uh, my time here, the last six and a half years, uh. Complaint on a vacation rental has not come across my desk. I cannot speak for code enforcement. Um, but I can speak for the planning department. We have not received any complaints.
Other questions, uh, your, Councilor Yarnell Hallman, my apologies.
I go by Yarnell, that's cool. Um, I, I don't think I see cause, chief cause Mickey, but have, there were, um. Insinuating to, um, I guess. Criminal activity as well. Is there, or have there been any, um, criminal reports filed with vacation rentals that we're aware of? Are we allowed to know that?
Dan, maybe that's a question for you. I don't know.
Yeah, I was just trying to promote, uh, the chief to have a better answer than mine.
He's on, he's on the attendees.
Yeah, I, uh, I don't know that there have been, but I, I wouldn't have that information. I, I would have to research on it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. I O, did you have something to add?
Uh, yes, I, I just wanted to add, uh, that where I, where I got the, uh, conclusion that there's been no reports, uh. Na- negative complaints about vacation rentals is from the staff report itself. So. Not, not my source. It's actually from, from staff. So I just wanted to explain where I got that from.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Finley.
Yeah, I do have a question for the proponents. I noticed in the materials that it said that. Um, and forgive me if there was a lot of materials if I missed this or don't remember it correctly, but it said. In the materials that they are gonna use it as a short term rental when they are not residing there. Um, and then later it indicated that this was, um, a property acquired for a short term rental. So is there any idea about what that split is? Um, how long or often the, the owners are gonna be inhabiting? The property versus having it as a short term rental?
Uh, you know, I, I don't know exactly what the split is going to be. Um, I, I would say that, uh, they do have one vacation rental. They live at, uh, part of the year. And so this would probably most likely be the other part. Um, I, I don't know that we've put that, um, in any of the materials or, or whether. Um, it's, it's a grounds for approval or, or denial. Um, that's, that's probably why we didn't include it. Um, but, but, um. They, I do know that the reason why they chose, uh, why applicants chose Newburgh was because it's a place that they'd like to live. So my, my, uh, best guess would be. Significantly, not, not occasionally.
All right, um, you know, at this point, um, any other ques- any other public testimony that we'd like to take now are questions of proponents or opponents. We still have the chance to, to question staff, et cetera, but I will close public testimony unless anyone else has anything to add at the moment. Okay, public testimony is now closed. So, no, before I do, so public, a public agency letters or comments before I close public testimony. Did you receive any?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks very much. Public testimony then is therefore closed. City Attorney Legal Announcements, please, Mr. Walker.
So this, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'm going to ask, um. Legal counsel for the proponents, Mr. Aiello, if, uh, if the applicant waves the seven day timeline to submit a final written argument.
Uh, could I, could I ask one question before I answer that? Uh, my, my only question would be whether or not the, uh, letter from, uh, Mr. Stamp is gonna be included in the record. Because I haven't seen that. I would like an opportunity to respond if the council decides it's going to be included. If the council's concluded, it is not going to be. Included in the record, then we would wait.
So council does have the, the authority to leave the record open to admit the letter. I, um. In response to that, if council does want to, uh. Include the letter in the record, we should leave at least a seven day period, um, for the proponents to, to, to review and respond to that. So we would be looking to continue this hearing into a future meeting.
Okay, then we will, we will wait.
Well, well, let's see if, at, at this time, I'll see if council intends to, to, intends to include that. Um, so Mayor Rogers, uh, what I would submit is maybe we have a, a, a council, um, deliberation and, uh. Conclusion on whether, whether it will be included or not.
Okay. All right, uh, Denise, uh, Counselor Bacon.
It's okay, Rick, uh, mayor. Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we do not accept the, the written testimony. I didn't even see it in my email yet.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of not including the written testimony received today in the packet signified by raising your left hands? Uh, let's see, that looks like four. Um, all opposed, uh, signify same sign. And me, I'm gonna abstain because I did see the letter and I did read it. So I'm going to abstain. So, so did you get that?
I'm not clear, Mike. Were you a yes or a no?
I, I was a no on it.
Okay.
Okay. So I think you've got four, one, one, if I'm right.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so with, um, the vote by the council is not to accept the letter. Um, and now, James, can we continue on?
Yeah, given, given the closure of the record, I will now, uh, I guess resubmit my inquiry to, uh, Mr. Aiello on behalf of the proponents. If you wave the seven day timeline to submit a final. Uh, yeah, written argument.
Yes, we will waive, uh, the seven days.
Okay, thank you very much. And a couple of post hearing announcements. If the decision is not made tonight and continued to another date, the record could be reopened at that later date by motion of the council. Therefore, do not assume no further evidence will be taken. If the decision is made tonight, the council has the authority to reconsider the decision following proper procedure. This motion to reconsider usually, is usually required to be made at the next meeting of the city council. The fact that the council could reconsider their decision does not affect the length of time for appeal of that decision. That concludes the post hearing announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, final comment from staff and a recommendation, Mr. Rux.
Mr. Mayor, uh, staff's recommendation is to adopt order twenty twenty one dash forty two, which approves the requested conditional use permit with the attached conditions. Of approval in attachment nine, exhibit B, planning commission order twenty twenty one dash oh, six.
All right, thank you, folks. Do we have any questions for Mr. Rux? Uh, you, you know, I have, I have one thing and, and again, this may not speak specifically to this, but there was quite a bit of talk about things like fences, sidewalks, park non, not allowing parking on the street. I don't know where we are with any of that. Did that get resolved? Do we know? I guess I'll direct that to you, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, um. The issue of the fence, staff did do research in regards to past partitions. Um. My understanding from the applicant is that they did have a survey done for where the property pins were located. They were adjusting. The location of that fence accordingly. I know our engineering department did some research. I know our engineering department did some research looking at easements. There's a storm line that runs down the abutting property that goes down into down into Shahealan Creek, and Brett Music might have some more information on that. The non remonstrance is the issue about future street improvements. We had received some inquiries about, to our city engineer about improvements to the roadway, and she had shared the process for an LID, a local improvement district. This is one of the roads that's in town that approximately, I think you councils heard before, we got about four miles of gravel roads and alleys in town, and this happens to be one of those streets.
May I ask a question, Mr. Rux?
That would be up to the mayor.
Mr. Umfleet, I'm going to go ahead and allow it. Normally we wouldn't in public testimony, but I'll go ahead and allow it.
What about the front yard, the front fence that doesn't comply with the vision clearance setback or the yard exceptions, 15, 410, oh sixty and oh seventy?
That will be one that I believe there are issues with that. That needs to go to our code enforcement, code compliance staff. Yes, Mr. Umfleet and I have chatted about setback requirements for fences and heights and vision clearance requirements.
Okay, and then, okay.
Hasn't been resolved.
Right, but, okay, well, and am I to, am I to understand that, that in this instance, a fence is not necessarily a condition of approval or disapproval of this?
It is not.
Okay, I'd imagine sidewalk would be the same, and parking on the street would be the same, then?
Um, I'll let Mr. Music respond to the issue about the street.
Okay, Brett, if you could, greetings.
And here we go, work of the technology here. Okay, hear me now. So yeah, the issues with the street is it's a gravel road, it's unimproved. The criteria, the condition of approval that staff had came to, completely just broken through the code pieces of it is related to improvements with the property and requiring the sidewalks with the sidewalk, and they're, they're not being a street improvement there, sidewalks are not on the south side of the roadway in the location. So that's all kind of conditioned to be a non, non remonstrance agreement for future improvements and installing those sidewalks at such a time that it's appropriate. As far as the parking on the street, it is a narrow, narrow roadway. It's currently is not signed for no parking, as with numerous areas within, in the city. There's not, no parking there. There was a request that came through to the Traffic Safety Commission. That's an ability that means that applicants or citizens anywhere within the city can make a, make a approach to this Traffic Safety Commission and talk about no parking signage or almost there, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Music. All right, let's see, Elise, I thought I saw a hand, did you get your question answered?
I was just going to say kind of what was stated of not a condition for approval, but I do want to recognize Mr. Umfleet's concern just around staffing and type of communication around code enforcement. And I think that that's come up a few different times over the time I've been on council. So I do just acknowledge the frustration there.
Right, Mr. Smith, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I know the record is closed, but I just wanted to make sure we're absolutely clear. Some of those things were included as conditions of approval, but some of them were not criteria for approval, so the language technicality on that.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thanks, thanks very much. All right, you know, the other, you know, Mr. Umfleet, one thing I will say as well is that, you know, we here in Newburgh have discussed short term rentals over the years. You know, we have not been impacted, I'm sure, that others know better, other communities, particularly Hood River, coastal communities, et cetera, where, you know, they can have a significant impact. But anyway, but so we appreciate your bringing up your concerns. All right, any further deliberation, folks? Okay, city attorney, some legal announcements, I think, are probably in order. And if we're looking for, we did approve the waiver of the second reading, but we'll need a vote.
No, we did not, not that I know.
We heard it, but we didn't vote yet. Yeah, that's what I meant.
Right, the announcements that, so that we read the post hearing announcements, and then now I think we're going to the waiver of the second reading.
Okay, if I could get a motion, that would be great.
A point of order, this is not an ordinance, it's an order. So there's not a second reading required.
Okay.
Yeah, correct.
Perfect, thank you.
We, we do these very rarely, that's why the number is forty two.
Very rarely, and when we have back to back, it's even more rare. So there you go, so, all right. So forget that about the second reading, we will not worry about that. All right. Now, how's about a motion, are we ready for that?
Sure.
All right, Counselor Bacon.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Order Number 2021-42.
Second.
And read by title only?
And read by title only.
Thank you. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Jules with a second. All right, any further discussion? All right, let's get a voice vote, please, for this one. And by title.
Counselor McBride.
Yes.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman.
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plancarte.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Counselor Bacon.
Yes.
Mayor, or sorry, Counselor Finley.
Yes.
Mayor, it's six zero one as Counselor Cofield is.
All righty, well, thank you, thank you very much. And again, Ms. Hines and Mr. Neff, welcome to Newburgh. I hope you'll be spending ample time here. And otherwise, we'll move on in the agenda. We're going back now to item seven on our agenda, continued business. This is seven A, ordinance twenty twenty one, twenty two, eight, eight, five, an ordinance marked making, I'll spit this out, making certain determinations and findings relating to and approving the Newburgh Urban Renewal Plan and directing that notice of approval be published. And I believe this is Mr. Rux.
Thank you, Mayor, Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So this, the hearing originally started on this on October, August, I love October, August 2nd, and was held over to do the second reading until October 18th. Part of this was related to the resolution that was adopted by the Amherst County Board of Commissioners that was presented back in August of approving the plan, but requiring that it had to go to a vote. The council subsequently passed a resolution to go to a vote on November 1st of 2021, and then reconsidered that at their second meeting in November, and decided to not go to a, a vote in November of 2021. So as noted in your report, the recommendation in this one is to not adopt ordinance number twenty twenty one dash two eight eight five. And I suggested a motion is that I motioned not to adopt ordinance twenty twenty one, two eight eight five, and conducting the second reading of the ordinance. This in effect would terminate that process that we started on the original urban renewal plan and report proposal that you considered at your meeting on August 2nd.
Awesome. All right, you, you all heard that, so any questions for Mr. Rux? Seeing none, how's about a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we not adopt ordinance number twenty twenty one dash two eight eight five.
Second, okay, I'll, now I'm going to let Elise do it.
So nice.
So Elise with a second, all right. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of not approving this ordinance signify by raising your left hands or right hands, whichever you so approve. All right, looks unanimous, so six oh. All righty, thank you very much. Moving on now to new business, we're on item nine A, Resolution 2021 3767, a resolution extending the street seat pilot program for two years through August 17th of 2023.
Thank you, Mayor, Doug Rux again. So back in August of 2017, city council sitting at the time adopted a pilot street seat program. We modeled this ours off of basically the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, not Wisconsin. And you've probably seen more of these popping up there around the globe. As we moved into the pandemic, we saw more and more, I know, city of Salem, they were calling theirs, you know, outdoor platforms in their streets and so forth. We've gone through two renewals of that pilot program. And when we came to August of this year, I have to candidly say with workload, I did not have time to get this in front of council. So that's why I'm a little bit late getting it back in front of you. But what we're asking is to continue this pilot program for an additional two years. We have one street seat in operation in Newburgh today. We've had several other inquiries. We're also trying to be cognizant of fact that our businesses are in the COVID-19 pandemic and moving operations outdoors is a way to help those businesses to survive. By extending this by an additional two year period, it would allow us to work as we're working with ARPA funds, and I know the budget committee in the council had a couple of conversations and how funds might be used. But also, we've been in conversations with the Newburgh Downtown Coalition. Originally, we had identified to do an update of our parking utilization in the downtown area. We haven't done this since 2016, 2015, 2016 timeframe when we did the downtown plan. And we probably need to address that issue to look at parking before I would bring anything forward for consideration for a permanent program. So with that background, it's pretty straightforward. Staff is recommendations is to adopt Resolution Number 2021 3767.
All right, any questions of Mr. Rux, folks? I'll make a comment more than a question. I very much appreciated the reference to sort of building code and how we handle that, because I know there were some questions on how things were, were built and how they were located. So the fact that that has been addressed, I great, greatly appreciate that. Anyone else, any other further questions? All right, how's about a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2021 3767.
Second.
And a second from Denise, any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your left hands. Looks to be unanimous, Sue six oh. All righty, well, thank you very much. Let's move now on to item number nine B, Resolution 2021 3769, a resolution authorizing the city manager to an expanded additional 20,000 from the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund for the purpose of repairing an urban renewal feasibility study, urban renewal plan and report and public outreach. All right, Mr. Rux, you may be muted.
You think I would learn after almost two years, but I still forget. I, thank you, Mayor, Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So this is a proposal to utilize Fund 14, our Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, an additional $20,000 to go back and revamp our renewal plan and report proposal. The council initially authorized use of money out of this particular fund to put together the urban renewal plan and report in conversations with the consultant team on making the necessary revisions. We've identified a cost of additional $20,000 above what the council has already approved. You had done an earlier one of these where we allocated an additional $10,000 of money out of this particular fund as we were going through some different iterations with the mill site, and it took some additional analysis and so forth. So staff's recommendation on this is to adopt Resolution Number 2021-3769.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Rux? Hearing none, I will, oh, Mike, go ahead.
So I'm assuming that this is something that we can't do in house? I think I asked the same one question earlier. So this is something we can't do in house, we're gonna farm it outside?
We have, we need to go outside, so our consultant of record on this project, who has helped us work through preparing urban renewal plan and report, would take their work, it would take additional financial analysis. We do not have that capability or capacity in house to do that, and we would have to revise the legal description of the proposed urban renewal district, and we do not have that skill set within staff at this time.
Any other questions, folks? All right, then I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt Resolution Number 2021-3769.
Yeah, second, and Stephanie with a second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your left hands. Sue, that looks to be unanimous, six oh. All right, folks, we are now on to council committee reports, any, anything for the good of the order?
I have a quick question, it looks like Waste Management was expecting a vote, according to their notes, but I don't.
I don't know that I, did we see that in the packet, do we know?
Yeah, it wasn't in the packet, I emailed them and let them know we can bring a resolution forward in the next meeting on the first.
Okay, great, thank you. Yes, Elise.
I would like to report that I'm ready to take my committee back with case Newburgh if Mayor will allow it.
Why, certainly, see, I missed the last meeting, I was out of town, so.
No problem, I will.
They are going to be happy to have you back.
All right.
Thank you, and I have one thing to thank Council President Finley for sitting in on this opening of the C E, C R R C meeting. So Counselor Finley, thank you very much for doing that, I appreciate it. All right, anybody else, anything else? All right, with that, I am going to adjourn this meeting, but we enhance the gavel over to Council President Finley for our next item this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I'm in a call to order the Newburgh Urban Renewal Agency meeting, and there is an agenda in Spanish for people following along at home. And we really just have one piece of business on the agenda, and it looks like is going to be Mr. Rux.
Thank you, so Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So we have one item on your agenda this evening, and that is a resolution to accept the Amherst County Board of Commissioners Resolution and Order from their July 29th meeting regarding the urban renewal plan. This is a formality issue, it's process formality issue. So you have included in your packet a copy of that resolution order that the board adopted. By adopting this particular resolution, you're just acknowledging that you've accepted the document that was forwarded on to the agency. The council already had the, the copy of that particular resolution in your, in their packet when we were doing the ordinance discussion earlier this evening under the council business session. So recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 2021-03.
Thank you, are there any questions for Doug? All right, hearing none, I will take a motion if someone has it.
Oh, here, I never get to do it, I'll, I'll do it here. I move approval of N U R A Resolution 2021-03.
Second. All right, we have a motion on the floor, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. And Sue, it looks like that was unanimous. That is all we have, and I'm assuming that there are no public comments, Sue.
No, Madam Chair, there are none.
All right, if nobody has anything else, I will adjourn the shortest meeting ever newer Urban Renewal Agency. And, Mr. Mayor, would you like to read the announcements for the executive session?
Yeah, we're gonna.
Before we leave.
Adjourn this meeting and we'll come back in, but we will, I'll now read the announcement required to hold an executive session. After the announcement, the Zoom meeting will terminate, and the council. After the announcement, the Zoom meeting will terminate and the council will enter into a separate Zoom meeting not open to the public. Uh, we will now meet in executive session for the purpose of deliberation with persons designated the governing body to conduct a performance evaluation of a public official. The city will now meet in executive session for the purpose of considering the dismissal or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. The executive session is held pursuant to O R S one ninety-two, six, sixty-two B. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons will be allowed to attend the executive session. No decision will be made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, the council may return to open session to make any decisions arising from discussion in executive session. We will now terminate this public Zoom meeting and begin the executive session. All righty, folks. So we'll see you on the other link in a moment. Bye-bye.